Alright, so my name is Paul Tagli Ferri, I'm the Chair of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals. It is January sixth, twenty twenty five, and it is now past seven P M. So this open meeting of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty three relative to extending certain Covid nineteen measures. Adopted during the state of emergency, all members of the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals are allowed to participate either in person or remotely. The Act allows the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals to meet in person and remotely until as reasonable public access is afforded. So that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair knows otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to the Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube. You get a link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law, this meeting will feature public comments. First up on the agenda is consideration of petitions submitted by Z H S Trust for a special permit to operate. An adult daycare on the property located at thirty nine forty three King Street, map eighty two parcel thirty one in the Business. West District zoning district and groundwater overlay district area three, it's also continuing the consideration petition. Submitted by Z H S Trust for the modification of the site plan approval and use variance to allow the operation of a senior living facility which was decreased. Of twenty two units proposed increase of fifty parking spaces and associated modifications of the property located at thirty eight King Street, map eighty two parcel twenty. And thirty nine forty three King Street, map eighty two, parcel thirty one in Business West District and groundwater inspection overlay district area. Right, so I think just from a. Let's see, so first up. From a procedural perspective, I think, you know. What we can do to start is. I would like to focus firstly, you know, so I think we did, so what's what's taking place between our last meeting and this meeting? Is we've had, as a board, or I should say lawyers had conversations with our town council. And on the advice of town council, we are going to be looking at sort of this as a completely new case. So regardless of what has happened previously in twenty eighteen and twenty twenty one. This application will be a standalone application, meaning that we will be, we will have a decision for. A use variance and then we also have a decision for a site plan, especially for a site plan approval. So that was on the advice of town council, he felt it was probably his way to sort of go about doing so. So with regards to the use variance, I'd like to start there in terms of our discussion as a board. I think the use variance is critically important. It's sort of the impetus for everything that we're sort of discussing here today. And so I think. Again, just based on the conversations and emails that lawyers had in town council. With the experience, right, I think that there was sort of two different texts or two different sort of avenues for. This application and how a board we should be looking at sort of the use or the relief. Stop for a experience, right? And so the first one was. Providing relief for the assisted living definition that is in the Northborough bylaws, right? So just from a high level, Northborough has a definition for assisted living, it basically says. You know, you, you know, anyone that wants to open up or use. Something that isn't assisted living needs to be licensed with the. Executive Office of Elder Affairs, there's obviously a bunch of other criteria. And so based on this application, the applicant is looking for relief from that sort of licensing. The other avenue is to essentially allow. To allow for. An increase in the density of the multifamily bylaw, use bylaw. So in the Business West District. Given the size of a given property, our bylaws allow for multifamily. Just a back of the envelope calculation for those two lots that are in front of us today. It's approximately eleven multifamily units that can be allowed, right? So it's. One of the properties, I think, is forty two thousand square feet, it owns forty eight thousand square feet, if you look at the density dimensions. You could get two units per twenty thousand square feet and then it's a seven thousand. For every other unit after that, give or take, it's about eleven units, right? That still requires special permit that come in front of our board. So given that and given those two criteria, that is sort of how our board are the least. Is going to look at this case. So there will be no sort of modification of previous things. I'll also say that. I think that. The we we will certainly not come to a final decision tonight. You know, any sort of final decision that we we do tonight would require sort of. You know, myself and probably mostly town staff to write a decision within a sort of two week timeframe. And I don't think that that is sort of appropriate, but what I would like to get out of this meeting is sort of. Directionally where this board is headed in terms of their thoughts on this case, this application. To at least give the applicant, to give town staff and to give us as a board sort of. Directionally where we where we are sort of headed, right, where that direction is. So the first thing I'd like to sort of dive into. Is, and I think again, what is the most important thing is sort of the use variance. Road that we have in front of us and the question of whether or not we're sort of granting relief for. Allowing assisted assisted. Assisted living facility without sort of the licensing agreement or or the licensing that comes from the elders affairs office or. Sort of a relief with regards to the density of multifamily, right? So. Just to kind of level set out that that's kind of, you know, that's kind of what we're thinking as a board. So I don't know if anyone has any opinions on those two avenues. I can certainly give you my sort of initial thoughts on. On the two of that's. That work. So I think with regards to. The assisted living review and and sort of allowing. An assisting living facility to operate without the licensing of the Executive Office of Elders Affairs. You know, I don't see how that's an appropriate avenue for for this. You know, appropriate sort of relief with regards to variants. You know, a quick sort of understanding of what the Executive Office of Elder Affairs does. Is there, you know, essentially state. Government licensing oversight committee that is there to sort of protect our seniors and protect. You know, older people in facilities as such, right? So if you think of other assisted living facilities in town, you can think of like Coleman House. Whitney Place that exists in both Northborough and Westborough. And I don't believe that, you know, allowing for an assisted living facility to not operate with appropriate licensing. Is a is a good use of a of use variance, right, which obviously the town of Northborough allows. And then with regards to the density. So as I said earlier, you know, multifamily is allowed in Northborough, multifamily is allowed in this part of town. Our current bylaws allow for this particular property up to eleven units. Right, that they can apply for. I don't believe that a multifamily, even if it's strictly multifamily. That is sixty six units. Is an appropriate use or an appropriate relief to be granted for a use variant. So. That's where that's just kind of my, I have, you know, several reasons why. I mean, I think if you look around town, I think if you look at the other multifamily that exists. Even if you, you know, Avalon as an example. You know, Avalon has, I think it's three hundred. Three hundred and eighty two units on forty two acres. It's approximately nine units per acre. Right, this is sixty six units on roughly two acres. Right, so there's definitely a big difference between other multifamilies that exist within town and this average. So I kind of wanted to start there, I don't know if anyone else has any opinion. Or thoughts on use variants, but I think that that's probably where we should start this session.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So having been on this board for. Every application from this applicant that is coming in front of us. It just feels like we've come full circle. The initial proposal was for basically apartment complexes on this unit, which we denied. The applicant came back and asked for assisted living. Sixty six one bedroom units. And it wasn't a super popular decision, but what we approved in twenty eighteen was a stretch. And the fact that now the applicant is coming back once again, going from eighty one bedroom units to sixty six units. With fifty four two bedrooms, so we're going from eighty eight bedrooms to approximately one hundred and sixteen bedrooms. And the fact that the M V T A law that just went through the state. And we're considering high dense housing is fifteen units per acre. What this applicant is asking for is thirty three units per acre, blows that out of the water. The only reason why we approved this is because of assisted living. We looked at the macro economics of it and the aging population. The fact that folks need additional help to get to stay on, live on their own, things like that. We approved that. The fact that we're coming back now and the applicant is balking at. Certain things like forty B, no sidewalks, additional parking spaces, really. Really raising a lot of red flags working. Because we initially, again, denied the first proposal because of the traffic on King Street. And because of the impact to first responders and to the schools. The assisted living, which ages should or not. Most likely are not going to have automobiles and not going to have to drive around, they're going to be basically on property. So the fact now that we're just coming back, basically doing a three sixty from the initial proposal. I'm not in favor of what's being proposed tonight for that reason alone.
Thanks, Brad. Anyone else have any other. About initial thoughts or opinions? I do, but I kind of wanted to wait for some of the more senior members to share their thoughts first.
Mr. Chair, are you going to ask everybody to see and are you just, because I think you 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 put a totally different emphasis of my application. It's not my application. You 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 gave, and I saw your, you know, attendance, may say something that you just want to just go ahead and get the decision first.
No, no, we're we're not making a decision tonight.
But I think the way I'm I'm hearing the board, first of all, without your respect, sir, I am not here to ask for, I did not apply. For multifamily zone variance, so I think that's on the table for me. I didn't apply for that, so I don't know how we can integrate that, I mean. B, I did read your council's view and the council said whether it's a new or existing application, you do need. Two separate votes, it did not say categorically that it is, has to be a new application. And please bear in mind, sir, that I do have an approval for eighty eight units. And I am not saying that it will be an assisted living facility without. Without Executive Officer under the affair license. What we're saying is that Northborough bylaws is very unique, that does not, you know, basically address. The growing needs of seniors and Westborough, I gave you an example of five facilities and none of them, sir. Work under the executive officer under the affair. If you build an independent living senior facility that does not require a license. And if you need some due diligence on that, you are welcome to call, it is not required by law. For the facilities to get the license from the executive officer under the affair if they do not do certain things. So I am building a facility which is basically in demand for and and most towns are developing those nowadays. And I gave you examples of Highland, Highland is not, does does not run under a license and it's very much. A facility which we have. And then Shrewsbury and and Willow, the example you gave, they have two separate facilities side by side. One is assisted living and the other one is independent living. And in the independent living facility, they do not run under a license. So basically, we are, you know, we 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 are in a similar, most towns deal with independent living and assisted living similarly. And your 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 council clarified that we, and I agree with everybody here, that. The facility, your assisted living definition has that particular advantage. That's the reason why you're here, to ask the waiver. So I'm not here to ask for forty B, I'm not, you guys asked that question, we discussed that, but I'm not here for that. I'm not here for, you know, asking a multifamily variance, I didn't apply for that. All I'm here for is to ask the waiver on the on the license for executive officers of elderly affair. Simply because I am not offering those activities and hence we are going to offer much more cost effective. Yes, you can say that the number of bedrooms per the square footage has not increased of the envelope. And basically the units are bigger because we have less number of units. And, you know, basically all towns are going in that direction. You don't have that direction and that's the reason we are we are here, okay? So I would, I would, I would hope that we focus on what I applied for. We do not even look at the avenues of increase, I'm not asking for increasing density. I am asking for reducing from eighty eight units to sixty six units, which actually lower your burden on two major issues. One, your 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 inclusion rate and our our low income requirement, it does, that's the fact. It goes from eighty eight to sixty six. Where there's two bedroom, one bedroom, that doesn't matter, it does reduce your burden. Secondly, it does reduce your burden on your sewage, which is already, you know, our capacity.
You're saying reducing eighty to sixty six, but you're adding more bedrooms, how does that reduce capacity?
It does, because I'm not using your sewer. If I go sixty six, I'm using and and if you put senior only, if it's multifamily, it doesn't work. But if you put senior, seniors, when you're building senior homes or senior living, then the required of the septic is different. Per gallon, per per bedroom versus if you build multifamily. So hence, our septic meets the requirement, so we will not be using a sewer. If it's eighty eight units, then I will be using your sewer, so I am lessening the burden on the town for the sewer capacity, sir. So these are the facts.
Yeah.
These are the two major facts, A, I will be reducing the impact on your overall count. B, I will be reducing the impact on your, just just two more minutes, sir. And then on top of it, that I, you know, basically, we are not dealing with any, by the way, even though. It's fifty five or whatever age is selected, you still cannot have under eighteen kids on on this type of facility. So hence, you're not dealing with any schools. When I'm reducing certain activities and putting independent living, you're not dealing with government type situation and that's the reason your your police, your 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 fire. All those requirements are happier because we'll have far less of calls on that. So again, the scene is yours, you can live with eighty eight units, assisted living, if you're happy. But that is actually increasing your burden on your on your resources. What we are trying to do is we're going with a new trend and trying to, you know, so I think we cannot complicate this with increasing density and this and that. We're not increasing the density and then also we are offering, you know, major improvement on the. And that's the reason we brought our traffic engineer and we spent a lot of money and we thought that today we will be talking about. You know, the 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 traffic flow and the parking and all that, and that's the reason we have, you know, our team here. But if you, if you, I would say that we will go in and look at those, you know, opportunities we are doing, we're going to be spending. Literally millions of dollars to improve all this flow and all this entry to Northborough. But, you know, if 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 that's not what you guys want to talk about, that's fine, you know, and.
Yeah, so I mean, I would just say, you know, we we are proceeding under the advice of town council and how we. Get from what you had proposed in your writing versus what our bylaws are saying, so. I appreciate it and we will give you every opportunity to respond.
I mean, I read those those, you know, meeting minutes, I mean, those advice as well, I mean, Lordy sent it. Correct me if I'm wrong, he said whether you order new, that doesn't matter. You know, it it's not, he said that you've got to use this as a new application, that's not what he said. That's not what he said.
We're we're proceeding as it's a new application.
But that's that's your perception, sir, that's not the legal council said.
Okay.
That's your perception, that's fine, he said that he said it doesn't matter, you need two separate roads, that's what he said. And and he did not say that you have, you know, you 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 look at the multifamily, that's all your perception.
Mr. Chair, if I can help.
Sure. Just speaking for myself only, and maybe this helps, maybe it doesn't, but. I'm still looking at this application for myself the same way. In terms of what's in the application, what standards apply to the application. Whether we call it an amendment or a new application, so and and I read the council's email as well, I I'm I'm also, you know. At the same, so the comments I was going to make whenever I get to make them. It, to me, it isn't making a big difference whether. Stylistically, we treat it as a new application amendment of a prior prior approval. So to me, regardless of who's right or if anyone's right or what's the correct outcome of that, to me, it doesn't make any difference. Because I'm still going to look at the application, the standards and try to apply. If my interpretation is that a a new decision on use variance and followed by. Decision on the site plan approval is is how we should proceed on this, in the cleanest, you know, more straightforward way. You know, obviously, what would happen in twenty eighteen, twenty twenty one is what happened. And that's that still exists, you have your opportunity to build whatever it is that you want to build, right? That's, we're not, we're not renegotiating what happened three years ago. Right, we we are taking this in, I mean, it's basically a brand new board except for one or two people, right? And so that is how we are going to proceed, so regardless of what. Thoughts are there. As the Chair and this board, I am saying that we will be looking at this as on its own. So, Suzie, I think you. Yeah, sorry.
Um, I I would be, I I agree with the two of you, I believe it is a, I. I I know you think it's not a burden on on town resources, however. I, a majority of the calls for fire and rescue do go to senior living. And senior citizens and a lot of times if they don't go in any ambulance, I've heard this from the fire chief many times. They don't go in an ambulance, they don't get charged, so they they're encouraged to call the fire whenever they have a fall. Whenever they knock their head or anything so that they can get quickly checked over. And if they don't ride in the ambulance, they don't get charged, so. I I host coffee hours for the the fire station and my other committee, but. So they they do, it it's going to be a burden, so I don't want you to think that it's going to be no burden on the town. I I also taking away the licensure, I I don't remember, I didn't, I don't remember why we put that in, but I'm sure I haven't gone back in the minutes, but I feel like. If it was put in the minutes, it was put there for a reason and I don't want to. I don't want to neglect that or look it over for for nothing. And it, I mean, it fifty five and older, but these are active adults and we're not putting in things for active adults like the sidewalks and. You know, different things like that, so those are just some of the things, I mean, we're doing the active adults and everything and yet we're having. The group adult daycare, so it is like assisted living, which would trigger the E O E A licensing licensing. So in my head, in my head, it it it's very cloudy, like I I don't know. It's very confusing, so I'm I'm very wary of granting relief on that use variance for me.
Who wants to go next? Jack, do you want to?
Chair, I thought you summed that up very well at the beginning. Because as I've looked at this from from the beginning of this hearing, I was not sitting on those first two hearings. And I've been trying to go back and forth over the various documents that always did seem to come in the last day before we're discussing them. It's very been very difficult. So as we're looking at this for the. Relief of a multifamily density, I I would agree with you, this is a tough spot. Now, I would like to go back and stop at square one and and look at this from the beginning as its own independent. Application. Because going, picking and choosing the aspects that he wants to choose. To 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 discuss and to change, it doesn't work with, it doesn't work for this site and I would not be in favor of that. Now, if he comes back with a new application and we're looking at that, you know. I agree, it will use variance for assisted living makes sense, but unlike my colleagues to my left, I don't agree that. You were looking at the same thing, I think we're looking at two different things, we're looking at new application or an amendment. See, he has the right to go up and build what was granted in twenty three. So he can take that ball and go with it, or we look at a beginning of this stuff in square one.
Does anyone else have any other?
Yeah, just just quickly, you know, like again, I appreciate you know, the repeated conference and coming to the board and involving the town. Appreciate Chair's excellent summary of of matters at hand. I still struggle just with assisted living and the those use. Of what I consider to be a multifamily property with a. Adult daycare below. And I think that is in a way kind of contradicts or not doesn't contradict, but it. Basically is 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 outside the realm of what was originally approved. So as it's as it's evolved today, I, you know, I'd have to sit here and say that. I don't think it's right for us to kind of come back and. Reassess an existing permit for what the town had approved when the use of it has been lifted.
Uh, Jack?
Yeah, I I think the big thing here is understanding why the project was. Allowed with such a high density in the first place and that was because it was going to be under the umbrella of the. Elder Affairs. And license, once you took that away. The right to have that density is taken away. I understand that the applicant has mentioned that some other towns have, you know, allow for senior living communities similarly. As they do to for A L Rs. But just in my brief research today, I looked at a couple of towns, Shrewsbury and Westborough. And they have whole sections on senior living that also include. Other considerations that are are looked at, one, getting an application for a senior living project like. For example, density, I think Westborough requires five acres per thirty units, so don't want to do that, but. Something that's much more than the ratio of the density. Same thing with open space, there's required sort of open space. And my last point I want to make is applicants may. Keeps coming back to the need for affordable senior housing. But then the application, he says that the anticipated rents are going to be between. Three thousand, four thousand dollars a month. And on my. Calculations, that's not going to be too affordable for a lot of people, especially people who are. Over fifty five and on fixed income. So. Getting to the use variance part of it and applying the law, I'm not even really sure how. To apply the standards, it's pretty funky, you know, the the shape in. The lot and topography and soil, not sure warrants relief from a licensing requirement. And I think the same would hold true for a relief from the desert requirements for multifamily.
Thanks, I'll just, what I'll rephrase is, I agree, like the town of Northborough does not have a senior living. Definition or has some sort of any like work there. So, yeah, I think that it is a hole within our bylaws and so we're, you know, as a board. Based on the application, we're trying to sort of reach the gap of, you know, like you said, Westborough, I think I have Westborough's senior living. Four pages long of all the things that they define within their senior living, then density is one of them. Because it is, you know, an affordable, I think, to your point about affordability, there's difference between obviously capital A, lowercase a, right? Things that are getting designated as. Affordable that, you know, counts towards like our affordable housing side. Uh, Jake, I think you're. Yeah. So. We spent a lot of time looking at this at our first meeting in December and I've spent a lot of time since then. Looking at the application materials more deeply, comparing our bylaws, looking at the materials that have been referenced by the applicant, looking at the neighboring properties that have been referenced.
Looking at the neighboring properties that have been referenced by the applicant and other um. Characteristics of those and their bylaws, um, just like Jeff pointed out, I think, um, other than the parts of the bylaws that were used for comparison. Uh, I had to agree with Jeff that they also have a lot of other caveats that. Uh, those towns have put a lot of thought into um. Conditions for this kind of development that isn't licensed, that. Uh, all we're being asked to do here is essentially take our bylaw that says it has to be licensed and say it doesn't have to be licensed, otherwise the same. And I agree with really how Jeff uh kind of spelled that out, which is, and I think some others may have. Which is that, well, removing that does change the character, and so while I'm not looking at this as a. You know, you the second variance that you suggested per se, uh as well, it looks like a multifamily. At the same time, when we're looking at of a use variance to allow a use. That isn't expressly provided by our bylaws, I think it's appropriate for this board to do what's what it's doing. And look at the most analogous uses. And do compare and contrast with those uses as we're doing, and so and I think we're working really hard to do that, um. Multifamily is an analogous use, it's not exactly the same. Um, and and I understand that what the applicant is saying about directing the project toward a certain type of. A resident that may have certainly less burden in some areas. Uh, I also tend tend to agree with Suzie's knows way more about this, but just anecdotally. I've been listening into our fires, fire uh alarm. Free radio station, which is available for anyone to listen to for most of December in my free time. And I noticed that most of those calls end up being seniors who've fallen and need E N S uh attention. And uh so I, my anecdotes tend to support what Suzie has said. Um, on the other hand, I completely understand the applicant's position about smaller burden on school needs and things based on. Uh, the age limitation, um. So all that said, I I I, you know, A, one, I I really want to be a town that's pro development first, you know. Yes, that's a yes for me, however, um. When I look, a- and I do think that. Could we, in an appropriate case, give a use variance for a use that's not expressly allowed in our bylaws? I think we could in the right case, but I think we would need to do what we're doing now and compare it and then do do uh analyze. And when our closest thing um that doesn't involve licensing, that doesn't involve. Um. You know, forty B type stuff is. Eleven units, and we're looking at sixty six units, um, that's a really big stretch, I agree, and um. And I do think that when you look at the Coleman House, uh which is an assisted living, and I do think they have about two acres, and I think they have about sixty or seventy units. But from my uh research and understanding, a lot of those residents don't even own a car, um, they're there, they're there and they're locked in. Um, I also compared some of the other properties, and none of them had a thirty three unit per acre density. They were eight, twelve, ten, I think the highest I saw was maybe eighteen. Of the comparative properties that we're supposed to look at as analogous, and so even if, when I look at those analogous properties. We're still way too dense for a two acre parcel. I mean, if this were a five acre or a ten acre parcel, maybe, maybe some of the things the other towns are doing might work better. Um, I think in fact, the fact that these other towns' bylaws are being presented to us as examples. Is really for me a reason that would suggest that the appropriate thing to do is ask town meeting to change our bylaw. If that's the right thing to do, so that it's like these other towns, if 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 there's a demand for it, I think that it would pass. Um, my last thought about. The use variance is, I I've I've looked at um. As best I could to try to find out what other densities are there for similar types of properties outside of the assisted living. Living context, and uh and I I found a, you know, some public information about um. Well-known projects throughout the Commonwealth, and everything that I found that was over twenty units per acre was. Forty B, it had a provision for affordable housing in it, and we're not looking at any provision for affordable housing here. Again, another reason for me that says if if we're ever gonna consider something with a thirty three unit per acre density. That isn't assisted living, um. We re- I would really do reiterate what I said at the last meeting, which is I really need to see some affordable housing uh restrictions, and we're not seeing that. Um, and I've said a lot, but um those are all kind of, oh, and then finally. Because of all those things that I've said and that you all have said, I'm looking at our our authority to grant. Use variances, which our bylaw allows, is limited by M G L section. Chapter forty K, section ten, that we've all gotta stick to, and uh whether we like it or not. And to me, even if we could find circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape and topography. Specifically affecting this land, but not other land in this zoning district, which I'm having trouble finding that, I don't think that's where the emphasis has been. Even if we could find that, um, and a substantial hardship, I'm not sure what the substantial hardship is. Uh, I don't think I've heard that, um, and even if we could find that, it would still. The desirable relief would still need to be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying. Or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the ordinance or bylaw, so. Certainly, the requirement to have licensure had a meaning, and I think the best way to get around that is ask town meeting to get around that. Uh, not for us as a zoning board to say, well, no license is required now. Um, and otherwise, there there is, we know that there's a purpose to our multi-hou- housing density bylaw. That I think this would derogate the meaning of that bylaw if we were to grant this use variance uh as it's been applied for. And so I'm having a hard time on all aspects of our variance analysis, and so I'm I'm. Where I'm sitting right now, I'm having trouble supporting.
Actually, um, but just as someone who has had family at both Coleman House and many points in Northborough. I feel like this place is significantly different, Coleman House is a very much a full-service assisted living where. All three meals are provided, which obviously, if anyone, like, is that Coleman House is driving, I think that's a. But um, I appreciate your your thought, so um, I feel like. The board has provided feedback to the applicant, um, I think, you know, uh. You're welcome to sort of respond now or at a future date, um, but, you know, I think that the general thought is, and again. Based off town councils, and I think as a chair, we're we're gonna go with what town council is offering, we're gonna try to pick something that's. Analogous to the bylaws, the uses that exist, and you were, you can be correct, that senior living. Is not defined within Northborough's bylaws, um, and so we're trying to figure out how to sort of square, you know, this round pain. But um, yeah, I think the board has provided the feedback. Um, Towns F, I don't know if you have any.
No, I mean, I think it's very clear to me, um, the direction that the board is is going in. Uh, I'm kind of curious as to whether the applicant would consider withdrawing the application. And then maybe um thinking of an alternative plan. Um, if you withdraw to withdraw without prejudice, then you can refile without having to pay the fee again. As long as it's a similar application, um, or would you prefer to just go to the decision?
Did my turn to talk, have you had a last thought?
Mr. Chair, there are also some public comments, I think, possibly. Uh, yeah, we'll we'll, I mean, well, I, if you want to say something, that's not hurt.
I know, I I'm okay to listen to Bob as well.
It's just I'm just gonna have basically echo what Laurie says, you know, after reading the town council's report. And hearing the direction of the board, you know, one of the things is that, you know, variance is not to be taken lightly. Um, the other thing to remember is that if you look at a lot of the guidebooks that talk about use variances. Um, any type of financial impact on the town, whether it be good or bad. Should be off the table when you're discussing userance, um, the virus test gives you clear. Um, decisions about what to base a use variance on, and that's what you need to stay focused on. Um, I think in this case, you know, um, the applicant is right, we we have a hole in our zoning bylaws. It doesn't provide for this sort of situation, and and it probably needs to be looked at and corrected, just my belief. Um, but. You know, considering what we have in place now, we can't massage what we'd like to see in the future and make it work here. So what you gotta do is stay with the parameters that are set forth in the powers test and everything else, and keep in mind that. Both our stats gives you the principles to work with, like I said before. It's it's not whether or not there's an increase or decrease in fire activity or impact on the schools, all that stuff is off the table for discussion in the use variance. So I would just say, you know, Laurie, and you've got to keep a narrow path when you're, when you're kind of digesting.
Yep, that's all I have. Okay, thanks, Bob. Yeah, sorry.
I I, the first I had heard tonight was about the septic having a different impact, or there's a different test for septic. For elderly, is that true?
Uh, we did receive an email from the health agent.
Yeah.
Saying that um the septic system that was approved in two thousand eighteen is uh sufficient. For this um modified application, so.
For the number of bedrooms, but is it a different test for an elder facility rather than. For um like a regular multifamily, because the applicant had mentioned that, and I was just wondering. Because they applied for the licensing and it was denied, and then you were stuck with a multifamily building.
So I have the email that uh they provided, and. It looks like it's based on gallons, so the two bedroom adult units. Fifty four units times a hundred and fifty gallons per day per unit. Twelve bedrooms times a hundred and ten gallons per day per bedroom.
Okay, so it's just adults.
And then it says miscellaneous adult daycare capacity, and we think it's listed as six hundred gallons per day.
Okay.
I don't think the septic. Regardless of.
Okay.
I think it's based on like bedrooms, I think that's. Um.
Really, Jack, yeah, um, I think Laurie sort of summed this up, we have an application before us. We can't decide start a new application based by multi- um multifamily, we can't decide to start a new one based on assisted living. That's not up to us to decide, that's up to the applicant, so we have an application before us. I think the mortgage has indicated it has no measure in passing. Uh, and I think we need to go back to the applicant at this point, we give him the option to either proceed. Which will bring to a vote on this application, or to withdraw without prejudice. And to come back, possibly come back with a different application, or go off and do what he pleases. But it's not up to for us to pick the path for him to go down, it's up to him.
Yes.
Uh, but on this application, I think the board has given its opinion of where it's going.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I could just share a quick housekeeping, um, I also, as who we all did, I also reviewed. There was a letter from Fred Backstrom, I also looked at, I don't know, wanted to put that in the record, just as something that. It's also here, so she may just want to summarize what she said in the letter, but I won't defer to the chair on that.
Yeah, yeah, I think we can, uh, I was actually gonna listen to the applicant first, and then. Or the applicant is saying, you can say, and then you can open up the public comment, and then sort of just go from there, so, I don't know.
Yeah, no, Mr. Chair, I think the direction I'm heading today, which, you know, uh, that's the direction of the board, and. I I respect that, uh, it's significantly different than the direction we were heading last time, otherwise, honestly, I would have not done. A lot of things I I had done, but that's okay, you know, it is part of uh part of life. Uh, but I, it seems to me that we, if if that's the direction, honestly, then we're gonna go back to what we had. Uh, and I, you know, oh, I I I would think probably we'll just ask for continuing this meeting, and then perhaps. Uh, you know, come to the next meeting to either withdraw, so everybody has a time to think and process. But I'm honestly leaning toward withdrawing the application without prejudice at this point, because to be honest. A- and again, respectfully, so sorry, you guys don't have to look at this way, uh, but. When I look at the the situation, I look at that, you know, there is assisted living and there are independent livings, okay? And those are called senior livings, and and by the way, there is another facility very, very similar in size, uh. Which is the Orchard Grove on Warner Street in Shrewsbury, it's two acre, you can check, two point small, and it has actually eighty units or so. Uh, and yes, it is an assisted living, and that was our benchmark when we were, you know, coming here in front of you. Very, very similar facility, so anyways, um. Again, when we were taking out the uh uh memory care unit, you know, from the lower level. And making it a garage, in our humble opinion, we were lowering the burden on the town. Uh, when we were, you know, taking some of the amenities, and also we were, we have the shutout, we have, we have a lot of things, it doesn't matter. I think at this point, no matter what I say, because the board is looking and had some, you know, conversation or whatever, you know. And 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 considered certain things, that's your right. I believe in good faith, I was trying to offer a newer solution with where towns are heading. You don't have to believe me because you look at, you know, two, I'm maybe transvestite, my thinking. But I do believe that if, you know, we are not heading in that direction. I do believe I may have to stick with what we what we were wo- working on. And, you know, we'll just go with that, but I, at this point, I would say, maybe we'll just ask for, there's no need of further discussion, I had very loud and clear. Which way are we heading, so we will, if you guys want me to just give you right now, I can, but I would say. Maybe we all take a breather, and we all call it continue, and then come to the next meeting, and at that point, either I withdraw. Or, you know, maybe offer some other message.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't think we're gonna make a decision tonight, I think that was given, um, you know, I think the the purpose of this. From my perspective was to at least give you some feedback from the board so that we didn't get to a point of sort of no return, um.
Yeah.
You know, and I I I do view, you know, what town council had advised us is how this board should proceed, which is. You know, into your point, you are correct, there is a gap within, you know, Northborough's zoning bylaws, which is. Sort of going back to the last meeting where I was asking if you had gone to the planning board to see if they could propose. An amendment or some sort of guidance on how they could view, because ultimately, a planning board is the, you know, elected officials that. Write the the zoning bylaws, where we are just a zoning board repeals that sort of takes what the bylaws have and tries to make. You know, things fit, um, so, you know, I don't think we're we're not making a decision tonight, we're. Are going to continue this um, this case, um, but I think that we did want to provide, or this I did want to provide. Feedback to you, the applicant, um, and the board's opinions, um, you know, as such, so.
No, we definitely appreciate, honestly, had I gotten any glimpse of this in the last meeting.
Yep.
I wouldn't be even here, but, you know, so we have spent significant amount of resources and money to. Take steps in doing all that directions, but it's okay, I mean, it seems to me that board is not looking. At all to what I was presenting, because, but but again, I don't need to debate, I I I respect. What you guys have to say, you guys have done your due diligence, that's fine, I do have a feeling that ten years later, five years later. You will leave these facilities in independent living, because that's where everybody's headed, uh, other kinds of examples I gave you, but that's.
Yeah, so I mean, I think if if in it, if you are so passionate about independent living, which obviously it seems like you are, um, you know. Playing board meets tomorrow night, um, they are well within the process of starting to write bylaws for the twenty twenty five. Town meeting, um, you know, I know that they're always looking for input, um, in terms of. You know, new ideas and new things that can be fixed within the town of Northborough, so.
I'm happy to help, like Laurie and I have talked about that, and by the way, just a side comment on the the pricing. I don't know if you guys know that the assisted living at uh Orchard Grove, they're like eight to ten thousand dollars per month. So eight to ten thousand dollar to four thousand, what we're doing is a huge difference, yes, it does not go all the way to, you know. Fifteen hundred or two thousand, I'd love to see it, but, you know, at the end of the day, we have to make economic sense, but. Fifteen hundred or two thousand, I'd love to see it, but, you know, at the end of the day, we have to make economic sense, but.
Uh, so I think at this point, um, you know, I know that there, this is a public meeting. Uh, I do see, there's no one here from the public, but I do see, um, people on high birth. Uh, if there is anyone that is interested to make a public comment at this time, if you could please raise your hand. Um, I see Fran, um, Backstrand has raised her hand. Hi Fran, can you hear us?
I can, thank you very much, Paul, this is Fran Backstrand at seventy-six Cedar Hill Road. I I just, I just want you to understand that assisted living, assisted living residences. Are governed by Massachusetts general law and have very, very specific requirements as to what services they provide. What the units look like, the staffing and such. Once this um applicant determined that senior living, independent living was the way he was going. You shouldn't even think about the assisted living model at all. He is building an age restricted apartment building for active seniors. He's asking you to put it on a very small piece of property, therefore it is very dense. As the Chair of the Council on Aging, I can tell you, yes, I agree with this gentleman, independent living options for older adults is in demand. But they are in demand for people who are on fixed income, not the sixty-two-year-old who's still working with a six-figure salary. Who may want to live in a five hundred and eighty square foot, one-bedroom apartment. Um, so if there was a way in which independent living for seniors could be. Um, developed on that two-acre lot, absolutely, but we're talking about. Actually affordable when the average social security income for seniors today is like sixteen hundred dollars a month. He is correct that assisted living residences do come at a cost of about six to twelve thousand dollars in our service area. But they include two, at minimum, two meals a day, linen service, um, laundry service. Personal care if you need it, a lot more, so you really need to take that off the table and just look at this as age-restricted. Housing and whether it's an appropriate location for that. Thanks.
Good, thank you, thanks Fran. Um, I don't see any other hands up in the uh attendees at this particular time.
Mr. Chair, can you just make one more comment?
Sure, and I I appreciate the applicant's comments about. If you would have known this a month ago, you could have saved some money and I wish I could, you know, reverse time, I want to say for myself. Um, at that, at our first day of this hearing, I I didn't have enough information that I could have comfortably. Said yes, but, and so I, what I, from my perspective, I needed time to figure out, is there any way that I could support this? Um, and so I spent a lot of time trying to think and bend my head around and go through any avenue that I could. To try to find, is there a way that gets me to a yes vote on this, and unfortunately, I couldn't, but that was why I needed more time and I'm sorry I didn't. The time didn't help you, and by the way, your 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 folks who presented the parking facilities. Were we to get to that issue, they were very persuasive and helpful for me, unfortunately, I don't think we're gonna be looking at that, but I thought they was very persuasively presented. On the parking front, but unfortunately, I don't think we're gonna be talking about.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Sure.
The question is, one thing going into my head that while we were designing this, every time you really look at something, you make improvements, at least that's how. I've done things in life.
Yeah.
So I believe that quite a few improvements we have done in this in this design without changing the envelope, without, you know. So I'm just struggling in my mind and I'll just be, you know, out loud here, because that's what the question I'm gonna ask Laurie. Uh, those. Changes, the way I look at them, if we are going to, it seems to me, not even, we're gonna go toward whatever we have. But if we wanna make some improvements, I see them instead of improvements. Uh, but how do you, I mean, how do you want me to, I I I don't have all the list right now. I don't have the list right now, but.
Um, so some of the things that I can think of, there would be a change from uh what was originally approved in twenty-one. I had to do with um the location and species of uh vegetation, you know, street trees. Uh, the parking lot configuration, um. At the street lighting, the parking lot lighting, um. You are proposing a a change to the driveway configurations.
Well, we are going actually, we're going almost back to the original, even in. Uh, last time when I was I was in front of you, yes, I was moving more on the right-hand side, but with the consultation of. You know, the the traffic study and all that, we're gonna stick more to what was originally approved.
Okay, so what, Mass U O T already approved and, okay, all right, that's good, because that was a concern I had.
They didn't approve it yet, but they in concept liked the location and where they were going.
We didn't have the permit, but they signed a support letter, so we're gonna stick with more close there. But like, for example, I give you example, like we built a pretty decent sized. You know, park on the on the right-hand side, that's just a great improvement, there's things like that. Um, are an extreme, I don't know if I want to give this example, but extreme example would be. The septic, for example, versus the sewer, right? So, uh, and of course, we will not have the adult daycare center in this whole thing, we'll have all those things ripped off, we go back. All the amenities we had before, so. I mean, if we're talking about those type of changes with the executive office of elderly affair, not asking, take the waiting discussion out.
Right, you're specifying specifically a site plan, the special moment site plan changes as opposed to any certain use.
Yes.
Yep.
So do we need the board or are those administrative changes?
Of course, you've changed things so many times that it's it's hard for me to remember where we were before this submission. Uh, because there were some things that I was still waiting for that you hadn't supplied yet. Um, maybe the safest thing to do is. Just come up, because of course, then the plan won't show the under parking. Um, so that would be a significant change that they'd have to approve. So if you're going back to um not having the parking under the building, then. I I would think it would just be an administrative, you know, because there have been so many modifications, I. Probably like to get the uh ZVA's blessing, but it wouldn't be a public hearing unless. You're interested in putting that parking in the building, then we're still on the public hearing, but.
So I think. Regardless of the whatever changes are, those would be modified, those would actually be modifications.
Correct.
To the decision from twenty twenty, so that is separate.
Yes.
Yeah, so I I think probably if you guys could get together and figure out what those are and present them to us. Then we can discuss whether you need a further relief uh from the order or not.
Fair enough, we just wanna, we 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 need to do that and then we'll get with you.
Yeah.
And then hopefully we can decide well before the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, whether we need to come in here.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Right, yes, I think any sort of changes, you guys know more than I do, but. Any changes to the twenty twenty-one site plan that was approved.
Yeah.
If it exceeds a certain threshold that you guys determine to be.
Hmm.
Require us to step in and.
Yeah.
Then yes.
Yeah.
Other otherwise.
Yeah, if it's just a tree or a street light, then you don't care about that, but if it's. Changing the number of parking spaces, uh, increasing them significantly or decreasing them significantly, that's.
Okay, but thank you, that, I I I just wanted to get this out of my chest that, you know, what I'm thinking of. Like, give you some direction.
Sure, yeah, um, okay, so, uh. Do you have any other, okay, is there any other important, any other comments or questions, feel like a motion to continue, uh, sure.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to make Bush to continue the hearing for thirty-nine forty-three King Street to our Tuesday, January twenty-eighth meeting at seven P M.
Uh, Brian made a motion and Susie seconded, all of us in favor.
That's for both of the things that were included, especially use application of the use rates that we're hearing.
Yes, yeah, yeah. All is fair, all right. So, thank you very much, thank you, and, um. Uh, so next up on the agenda is minutes, we're on the twenty-sixth. Twenty-fourth. Yes, there's a minute.
Mr. Chair, a tiny one, but I don't need to just present amendment, just be making some comments, the record is what it is, uh. On page seven, it uh under the column, it said, Mr. Jones sent a letter from the homeowner's association. Whether I said that or not, it's what needs a homeowner's association, it's just other neighbors in the same townhouse. Uh, I don't, I'm not asking to be of any direction, but I find that it's, I don't think the homeowners association was involved, but I just want to mention that. Because I think.
It actually was the homeowner's association.
Maybe it was.
I think we had a letter from the homeowners association and then it was signed by all the homeowners.
Okay.
Well, let's let's leave it and maybe it, maybe my memory is faulty, anyway, is.
Do you need to eject it or just pull out?
I don't intend to sort of. Micro manage every word, it means things that come down, obviously, they're all, I think, in general, they're right, so.
Okay.
Uh.
If you write for comment. You write for comment.
Check, uh, the meeting minutes for November twenty-sixth, or as submitted with the uh minor change by. Uh, grab a motion and second it.
Thank you so much.
All right, um.
Yeah, just. Okay, uh, so do we have any other, um. So are there any sort, you know, we will, obviously, we have this case continued for, um, our. January twenty-eighth meeting, um, are there any other cases you're aware of at this particular time?
We do have one other case, however, I have not opened the file yet, it's just kind of heads up from the shelves.
Not assigned, who owns the plaza?
Yeah, he can explain it to you.
Yeah.
He's reviewed it already.
It's, you gotta figure out how to put up one of those burglars, you know, twelve by ten, whatever. It's within five feet to the property line, the next one you recall and complain, it said. Is in fact a fracture, uh, zoning bylaw, so. So you either move it or you can apply for a variance. Decision, so they decided to, you know, my decision. Ask this game to this.
So they're appealing your interpretation and not complying for the means?
They are applying the means.
Oh, okay, sure.
What's the property, just wanna do a little recon work?
Uh, two corn farm road.
Uh, honestly, you just remembered that off the top of your head.
It's amazing that things I forget.
Is anyone else have any other business with the board?
Um, kind this week's coming up in February, we first come through the fourteenth, but it will be spread out for all of February, so. Hoping it's a couple hours, anyone wants to.
What was involved in this?
Show up for the coffee hour.
I'll be especially nice to every customer.
Our goal is we try to get like a new person that's somewhere is only a community affairsman at each coffee hour and so far. Every year, like, somebody new has shown up to my coffee hour, every coffee hour, so it's been, it's been great, so we do. The the chief of police, the fire chief, um, the, um, I mean, I asked Stephanie to do one. Um, Greg and, um, Greg Martin did one last year with the school committee chair, Kelly Gannett, um. Was trying to get it, we spread them out throughout February though, because otherwise I'm running from coffee hour to coffee hour. Oh, you can drink a lot of coffee.
So are you?
Yeah, so other groups are gonna be doing something like Trinity Church is gonna be doing a chili cook-off and, um, the garden club's gonna be doing something, I think. So, we're we're in the early planning stages, but I'll have more at our next meeting.
Who's eligible for the chili cook-off?
I don't know, I don't know, they're they the, um, man contacted me last month and said he's gonna get back to, so. Should be good.
Anything about John Benenbaum?
I hope you got to your testing.
I've got three others with my chili.
Really?
Yeah.
I'll be a tester. Um, do we have rules and regulations for the board?
Great question, I have the same question with board.
Yes.
Uh, I don't believe we have.
I think we should make some.
I think that my law says we shall have, so.
So what we do have is, um, so last year we changed under site plan review. So the um planned for rules and regs apply to the zoning board of appeals whenever. But ZVA is.
I'll I'll talk more about submission of documents, um, not stepping in. You know, within three days of the meeting and we should have time to get these documents before, to review them. Without having them sent to us in the middle of a Patriots game or sitting there freezing up butts off hypothetically. Fun, I'm just saying, I think, um, there's.
Yeah, and it would be helpful.
Some rules and regulations.
It would be helpful, um, I I know this is frustrating, it's frustrating for me. As somebody who's trying to review and prepare things and the meeting. It's frustrating for you folks because of course I'm sending you stuff, so many things last minute. Um, so it it would be helpful just to have. Some sort of definitive answer, like what I tell people as a guide is. You need to get me stuff the Tuesday before the meeting, so one week in advance. Um, I know some boards, they say, oh, if you don't get it. Um, you know, by the Tuesday, one week in advance, then there's an automatic continuance of the public hearing. Um, so you absolutely will not get a decision if you're late, so. If you folks can maybe think, think about that.
Sure.
And then maybe at the next week, and we can put that right there on our webpage. And so when folks are looking for applications and whatnot, it'll say right there. And then there won't be hopefully the arguments that I currently get.
Need to change like the.
Like bylaws and stuff.
So the the bylaw says that we are supposed to, says shall, so, uh, have. Because I know the planning board has them, I know the select board has them, although they're not available online for some suspicious reason. They're physically in their room. Yeah, whoever's listening, um. But I think we, Mr. Chair, uh, you wouldn't mind putting on the agenda for our next meeting to continue that discussion, I think.
It could be just a discussion until, so we can fill this out over a couple meetings and maybe we go nowhere with it.
I'm more of a.
I'm just saying, you know, Laurie's getting stuff, I mean, that that's not right.
I'll see what other towns have done and whether we like them or not, so we we.
And I wasn't, I'm not blaming you for that one.
I saw it maybe Friday at twelve, something.
It's it's the nature of the business, I mean, I got four emails on Christmas Day.
Yeah.
Oh, I think you guys have more than accommodated.
And I got two on.
Yeah.
New Year's Day in my automatic messenger since I was out until this morning. So, you know, the the question is, and they want answers like that.
Yep.
And, you know, I hate to admit it, we're all humans, you know, you know, I, there's only twenty-eight hours in a day. So, um, you know, it is something that comes up fairly often, I mean, I think Laurie sees more of it than I do. Oh, I get my share, but I think she bears the bulk, so, you know, something like that might help. Yeah, well, like I was asking Laurie earlier, the the documents that came in tonight, I said. How do I know what's changed? And she said, by the date, I said, I got the date. But I'm sitting looking at the plans and looking at, there's no, nothing to show me what had changed, there was no color code, no, no index, no. Um, give nothing, so, you just can't do that.
I do typically, so when when I give my letter.
I saw your letter, I agree.
So then I I send it to them and I say. Take my comments and respond to them so that I know that you've addressed them or you're gonna ignore them or whatever the case may be. So a lot of times they do that, but not always. So a lot of times they do that, but not always, and then it's real. It it takes, it's really tedious, because I gotta like double-check every page and.
And it's not up to you to do their work, I'm sorry, you you're getting paid to do a job, not their job.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely add to the agenda and at least.
How come I put some rules and regulations, I've done it before?
Not so.
Just to stop the discussion, not not that different, I wanna adopt, I'm just saying, it'll just stop the discussion, that's all. And maybe you don't like them, but you do like them, I'm not sold on anything, I'm just throwing it up there.
That would be especially helpful for me.
Well, we're on the same wave, like, so I was reading our bylaws, and I was like.
I don't have to guess, but you're lying, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Jack, appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, uh, yeah, feel like a motion to adjourn speed. Uh, and then two adjourn, second half of work, we're supposed to say, all of us in favor, motion to adjourn seconded by Brad. All right, not adjourned, thanks, Terry, appreciate it.
Terry.